Gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I am the President of the United States of America. In the Republic which stands foundation under God, indivisible, in every state and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Roll call please.
Alderman Zary?
Present.
Alderman Dorah?
Present.
Alderman Milner?
Present.
Alderman Dickerson?
Here.
Alderman Miller? Present.
Alderman Reese?
Present.
Alderman Davidson?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Mayor Moll?
Present. Thank you. We do have a court this evening and we have Alderman Turner attending by remote with us. So there are no ceremonial matters this evening. Mr. Administrator, did we have any agenda requests for him?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. An approval to other minutes? First of all, the approval of the minutes of October 19th, 2020 of our regular meeting, I don't maintain a motion. Have a motion from Alderman Zary with a second from Alderman Dorah, Alderman Miller.
Aye.
And one to vote? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. And now the minutes of the work session, October 19th, 2020, I don't maintain a motion.
Good to vote.
Second.
Have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner, Alderman Miller.
Aye.
And one to vote? And it goes in as standing approved. At this point, I would ask you to please silence your cell phones if you haven't already done so. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda items. We have Attorney Debbie Olver with us this evening, filling in for Attorney Steve Mauer. So Debbie, Council Bill 72. Council Bill 72. Resolution of the Board of... Council Bill 72, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen at the City of Harrisonville to approve the special day request for the annual Christmas on the Square and Merry Christmas Street Celebration.
Madam Mayor and Board, this is the Love the Square, Amanda. She can come up and give more details about it if need be. They're clearly closing the square by blocking off all four corners of the street on December the 5th from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. For the activities and Merry Christmas Street Lighting Ceremony and festivities. This has been an annual event for Love the Square and has grown to include more than just Christmas Street Lighting Ceremony. And details are still being worked out. It will be a Santa Storytime Light Parade, Community Choir Performance, and the Merry Christmas Street Lighting. Been similar type events in the past and there's been no complaints. As most of the events in 2020 for the 19th is always concerned. However, we feel that the applicant head is worth closely. But the Cass County Health Department has developed a good plan to host the event with the pandemic in mind. Their insurance required for the arrangements has been provided and included in the board package as well. And if you'd like Amanda to come up and give some more details on the event, she's shaking her head. She can do it during the long-term agenda.
Most of the members of the board are familiar with Christmas on the Square and all the great activities that go with that. There are going to be a few changes this year, obviously because of COVID. But Amanda, last time we saw you, you were very pregnant. Now have you been in this year? So does the board have any questions for the staffs this evening about this year's Christmas on the Square? Go ahead, Alderman Davidson.
Please have one, Clark, here. You said two to seven and the permit says, permit says four to seven. I don't know the massive difference, but it's not true.
Four to seven.
Four to seven. I'm reading the staff report provided by the chiefs.
So is the chief's fault?
Yeah. It's not yours.
Okay, so it's four to seven.
It's four to seven.
Thank you.
Any other questions or clarification for Amanda? All right, I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Look at.
Have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorah. Roll call please.
Alderman Zary?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dorah?
Aye.
Alderman Turner? Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 72 becomes Resolution 038, Council Bill 74. Council Bill 73, a resolution of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to declare the official intent of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri to finance the cost of repairs and improvements to its community center and repairs and improvements to certain park locations in the city.
Mr. Rattler, Bill 72.
That is me. Madam Mayor and Board, this is a resolution to approve financing as a cost of a parks recreation improvement project. It'll be financed in $1.29 million. The two big projects that it would be financing would be the improvements, well, these repairs to the outdoor swimming pool. The pool lot needs to be addressed. There's several interioring areas of the pool. Also, there's several, like, the slide interior, there's laundry list that I know you'd be able to hear of. So it would address the outdoor swimming pool and bring basically the face of the outdoor pool. So it'd be renovating that and bringing it up, bringing it back to the larger campus. It would also, if you guys haven't heard, we had an issue with our endorsement pool HVAC system this past week. And it just so happened that we are already looking into replacing that unit. It's been suggested that we replace that for several years now. So this presents an opportunity for us to replace it. Luckily, we're able to get that unit working because a custom-made unit takes 30 weeks to build. So hopefully, the unit we have will last until we can get our new unit constructed. But it's working now and we'll be back up in tomorrow. So we did help, we held a special park board meeting on October 27th and presented this information to the park board and they approved it. So staff, we're going to move. I have to answer your questions. Actually, Ben's going to tag, try to look and tag me. This is Ben's going to present the financial part of it.
Mr. Mayor?
So, we talked at the last meeting, we were at the last workshop session
about the potential to fund these projects, especially the critical projects for the short term. And I believe Alderman Turner turned, we listened to that presentation again on board the other night. But what this does is actually allow us to move forward with that, with that repair. The thought process is that we would set issue an RFP for underwriters, really for banks. It would be a really cheap process. There would be no officials taking no rating. This is short-term, five-year, to definitely get into the forecast for community center cap. The bonds will roll up in 2022, I think is the last beat. So what we would be able to do is start these projects immediately, working to get the pool fixed before the next season opens. And the funding would actually hopefully, depending on the rates, would come from the local bank. Relation to RFP, simple, short RFP to allow local banks to be able to hit on this security rate here, which we had a lot of success at, especially with the rate structure for the amount. Who knows what tomorrow's going to bring for next, the two next two weeks. But right now, we're working with underwriter on the other COP, so we'll get a really good idea of what the rates will look like on this product right here. Short-term rates are really low. So we could hope to get a really good rate from the local banks on this short-term.
Would you like to talk to the Aldermen about the fact that you're only going to be paying interest?
Sure.
Will you actually pay Alderman?
Yeah, so that's a good point to make. So the concept here is to be able to place this note with the local bank. What we do is hold principal payments until 2023, when there are no more odd payments left and only pay interest for 2021 and 2022. We will start all the critical projects that have to be done now. And then as the year progresses, when you start working on other projects that are not as critical, but we'll have that fund available to us. So the interest only payments for 2021 and 2022, and it will come out of the community's fund. And then moving forward, the principal payments will actually be paid out of the community center as well. And we can do this over five years, 10 years. It depends on, it really depends on what availability that kind of looks. So we're deferring the principal payments until 2023, until the community, we're just going to pay interest. So if we got a 2% rate, you're looking at $38,000 probably a year for interest payments until then. And then, and then after that, we'll pay principal and interest until, what is the anticipation? If you have five, I mean, that's the negative, it's five or 10 years. What's the balance? Right now, we're looking at a five-year, around $435,000 to $450,000. That's principal and interest, both. On 10 years, it's going to cut that in half, a little bit, a little less than a half. So it's around $200,000, $250,000. Depending on the interest rates you get. Just depends on whether or not you want to go to five or 10-year. Because obviously, total pay, total payments are going to be more if you're over 10 years. Right. And then with, and right now, when I say short-term interest rates are great, they're under 1%. They're close to a half a percent. So again, it depends on what kind of bank rate we can get. I know we can get a good bank rate there. I know we've got underwriters that can access the market at great rates. That would hold the bids nationwide. And we'll get a lot of competition. And it gets still doing a five-year note or 10-year note, it really depends on the payment and interest rate. So 10 years still considered short-term? It's medium, it's not a long-term. 20 years, a long-term, short-term would be the five. 10 is breaking between that. It's going to be medium, medium, medium-term note. I would set this up to where we could actually refund it or call it in five years and then replace that, leave the community well. Okay, and none of these were included in the COP before, correct? That's correct, completely separate. And is any of, any of the costs here coverable by insurance because of the fire? I mean, I don't know the extent of what, what there was as far as fire goes, the damage.
So with the insurance, we luckily have not met our cost for the, remember the deductible yet. So, and we've talked with insurance, we're in discussion with insurance. And so if we do need that, we do have a plan of their bill reverses for our receipts. But as of now, we are able to repair the HVAC without being, without the price.
What is our effective interest group?
It's really an opportunity, especially that's what the park board is really excited about for us. You know, they weren't really thinking to be able to do anything in 2023. And reality is with the bond market is as low as it is right now. It's better to take advantage of it than wait a couple of years for it to be much higher. And so these were the immediate things that we had a discussion with them about. This is the, why is it? But they, they were excited about that. But even on, they are, have already pushed at for the long-term planning to start moving on that, to take advantage of this market as well. If we can be able to, in a sense, be able to roll this in even on the long-term stuff as we go down the road. So that we can be able to keep the interest rates really cheap. Because we would rather be paying, you know, 1% than wait two years and we're at 4% or 5%. So this was a, we thought it's the best opportunity to take advantage of the market.
So is this included all of our, sorry, you're talking about long-term, no, long-term costs? This takes care of all sort of long-term expenses?
It, it helped go toward those things. So get, but Ben and Grant, Grant went through with Gabe and Amy on all of our pressing needs now. And we can't wait. And then, you know, from the HVAC unit to the outdoor pool, a lot of the things that are even around here in the community center that are in jeopardy and become more of a liability. And so that's what this first efficiency is. And then the long-term tech is considered with the community center. Because one of the things that you all did that was really great with that COP, you freed up this building. Because now this building's been freed up to be able to even make our portfolio better for this opportunity with rates being the way they are. So it will roll in to additional long-term. I know one of the things, park board, we're talking about baseball, baseball fields and all those kind of things. And so that's the thing that we're going to be coming forward with on the long-term. Because they said, well, to them, it's foolish to wait if the interest rates. Because I, I've been doing it almost 25 years and been a little over it, so it's been doing it longer. But I haven't seen interest rates ever like this, ever.
It must be both of the long-term.
How much?
You got, you got any idea how much of the long-term?
That's what, you know, how much they're talking about in the other parts.
Just, just a rough estimate? Do you have a ball field? And probably be close to like, it kind of depends on what you want to offer as well. But for just a, so peculiar, two ball fields, synthetic or ball field, there's going to be 2.1 million. So if you just consider times in that, might not have many ball fields you want. So if you want four, if you, four, four, five, two, three.
Any questions for the Board of Aldermen?
One I have, too, the reason we're made this meeting now because of what we've done with budget is because if we get it, we got to pull done, we got to get open, I mean, or all of this might have serious trouble. So that's why we're, we're trying to do as quick as possible to get that open.
Can we share with you the fact that the issue of the odd pool, the fact that it has a track in the middle of the pot, right? And it was probably addressed in disguise that you did not open the pool this past summer, so, yeah. Any other questions that Ben or Grant can form?
Sorry?
I have a motion from Alderman Zary with a second from Alderman Dorah. Roll call please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorah?
Aye.
Alderman Zary?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Thank you. Council Bill 73 becomes Resolution R039, Council Bill 74. A resolution of Harrisonville Board of Aldermen authorizing the city to provide the Board of Aldermen a convenient document to see a front.
On the last meeting, you all had a discussion about the, the problem needs. And you asked me to have a policy put together to happen at your next meeting. And this is our policy for today's question.
Any questions with Mr. Rattler on Council Bill 74? I have a motion from Alderman Zary with a second from Alderman Milner. Roll call please.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorah?
Aye.
Alderman Turner? Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Zary?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 74 becomes Resolution 040, Council Bill 75. Council Bill 75, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen at the City of Harrisonville to approve a request from B and B Theaters temporarily to pay past due maintenance.
Okay, this is a, this is a request that we need to do all because it's outside the norm of what the Board of Aldermen policy is, it's way outside client's rules to give because of the nature of this business and the use of this business. We felt it was something that we should bring to you all, people, to do this type of policy. Because anytime anything that is outside the norm of your policy, we feel it needs to be brought up to you to deviate from that policy. They made this request and that has been put in there, as you see in the email that had came, that came through for this request to carry. And they are looking for these current payments to be deferred and for these past amounts. And there was a hope that they would be able to catch those up over the 12-month period starting in January. And I know because of COVID, it's been a abnormal situation that a lot of cities have been faced with. And we felt that this would be something for you all to consider as a purpose to deviate from your policy or not.
So you have the information in your packet that shows you that the past due amount included penalty and admin fee is $843.67. And their current bill is $100.00, including recent, for a total balance of $2244.20. So we, as Mr. Rattler said, this is kind of a deviation from a normal building policy. It is, it's changing circumstances, but it's a large bill and they asked us to spread out the payments over this next year. So we wanted to bring that to you for your consideration to see how you felt about it. Alderman?
I mean, this is definitely a unique situation for them. They didn't, I know a lot of businesses closed or expected to close during COVID. Not only did they have to close, but they weren't able to even provide, they weren't getting the opportunity to be able to play. So I understand their hardship. I just, you know, start something like this, you're setting a precedent. I think this is some stuff. It's not, and we certainly don't want anything to, we don't want them to go away for any, anything. But again, we will set a precedent here.
Is there any of the audience from B and B Theaters? Good point, Alderman Dorah.
Yeah, it's a good point, I would like to. But it looks like this they have a positive account, it's more than what the balance is. Come before, so it's, so it's. Have they given a commitment?
Is there any indication that they are going to go away though? No, I mean, we, we don't know. It's kind of like, you know, any other business, I mean, we don't really know. I know that in this, in this industry, everyone keeps saying they're putting Netflix and going under. So it's kind of, kind of the nature of the industry right now.
Alderman?
I concur with Alderman Milner in regards to the fact that, first of all, we don't want to go away. And they were in a big situation. I think we need, if we do set precedent on this, we need to make sure that the precedent is that it would have to be a very, very similar situation under COVID, where they shut down a business. They had to, they didn't have a choice in that. So I sure don't own a business and think this is maybe one for them to be able to come in and ask for that. And I didn't realize that the positives were covered, but there. So, and we do allow for standard, what do they call it, as far as billing, level in a billing over a time period. We just kind of do it in the rears, not in advance. So I'm inclined to approve it, but to make sure that we do set the precedent that it is. It's very unique in nature and not anybody else, kind of unless it's very similar in nature.
Alderman?
Yeah, what's the difference between this? What's the difference between this and the pawn shop here a couple of months ago? That they had a problem with paying their bill to the kind of stock in the town, when they called me. And they had the, they had the closet and everything like that. But we talked about a shut-off, they didn't have their things together because of the COVID. So obviously, we didn't, I should tell, we didn't treat them really as favorably. I'm not against doing this, but I'm going to say, hey, if I'm going to do it, we need to establish that. I think they got a breakover to getting told and had a couple of shut-offs and some demands for payment that they had paid. And you talked, you were correct about that. And you said that she was in the rears or, and she said it was because of Dane Patterson. Is that correct?
It's about, yeah, they needed to bring in documentation of the ownership and how they didn't have a...
Different than this?
So that was about the business license, I believe?
Same business, dealing with business license.
I'm not even so...
Yeah, but they had to put the bill in their name and bill switched over in their name. And the other person was not any longer a buyer of the business. So we needed their actual name. And they had to bring in their no tax owed to be able to get that switched in their name.
I don't really remember all the details, but I...
It wasn't really about just the bill itself, it was the...
Make that the, is this a similar situation to that where you...
This, this is a straight, the very best they could because they'd be open, the movie theaters were shut down the entire time.
Baker's partner left and the bill was in a part of the name, is that right?
Yeah, they said it was a partner, but we needed the actual name for their actual business.
Mayor, and... I mean, there's quite a difference, actually, there. They would name a pawn shop as items that people brought in to sell to them. This is an actual business that Hollywood was shutting down their movies. They, I mean, they weren't even making the movies, let alone putting movies out. So they weren't actually getting product to even be able to sell and open their doors to buy. So to me, that's kind of a whole different ballpark. But, I mean, this was, not only did they, were they required to shut down, but they didn't have products to be able to put out anything. And are we, what, what actual amount? Are we talking the $843.67 amount? Or are we talking the $2244.20?
Current bill is $1,400. And then that $843 is a past due amount for the total balance that they owe $2244.20. that they owe 2244.20. But they do have a deposit on the account that you cover that now. Yes, Alvin Dickerson?
We started out two months at the end of the year too, so I'm assuming they're going to accumulate more debt if you want to call it, 1400 dollars for just the last month, is that, is that correct? You've got, current bill is 1400, that's the 800, so is that in the current bill?
They may make, well, I mean, they may make some, maybe they're telling them to make it.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to assume is, is there going to be another 2000 dollars by the end of the year?
I would, plus we'd be telling them that they haven't paid this bill for this month for us to even say they'd be eligible for this.
So in, in all technicality, we're talking about the 843.67?
Yeah, well, I mean, it'd be all the debt of 22 because they, the way it was explained to me-
I thought we told, I thought you said we had, they had to pay for it.
They had to pay their last, the last, this month.
Okay.
So what's the opinion of the board, do you want to ask them to pay something on this balance and spread the rest out, do you want to utilize the time to cover it?
If you want, I mean, if you had more questions, detailed questions, and you want us to act on it, add them to the spreadsheet, we can do that too.
I would rather the current bill and their rears not be over the 2000 dollars, so you got the opportunity to cut them off, so that way we're not creating debt. That would be my suggestion, so that way we're, the deposit is covered, it's covering the debt that they may have. I would want them to go a month or two in the event, for some reason something happened and they decided that there was a certain potential even debt and you couldn't make any, so.
So, I think they came to us asking if they could stretch this debt out over the next month, so we're saying we don't want to allow them to do that, is that-
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm supportive of that as long as the debt does not be above 2000 dollars.
I don't say we don't pay it, we're supportive.
And do you, are you asking them to pay any of this past due bills?
I think they're either choosing to pay it, absolutely.
Are we able to use, like, their deposit, their debt possibly?
I, I would not, I would not-
You gotta use that once you close there.
So if your current balance is 2244.20, do you want-
That's the total balance, that's the total, that's the total profit balance.
That's the current bill plus the past due amount.
I'm worried the past due amount is 843, current bill is 1400, so the total balance is 2244.20, COVID, nothing else.
Correct.
So if they need to pay something, that usually goes, usually in the balance.
And they, they've not given us any information on when they're planning on paying. And I guess that, and I kind of, and we have a little bit of a limbo at this point because it would be nice to know if they're going to be able to pay us anything if we now can.
So, Mr. Ratliff has suggested that we table this until the next meeting?
I bring back your question so we can ask them your questions and then ask them if they would answer.
Correct. So we, so I need a motion to table this until our next meeting, at which time we would invite B and B Theaters to come and then we would also have Jerick Smith here who was explaining the payment arrangements and what they had told him because with his, with his absence, Mr. Ratliff, a little bit out of this event because he doesn't know the conversations that they had had with Jerick, so. Alvin Miller?
By the next meeting on 16, they'll have an additional bill of 50, if they should use it on Alderman.
Unless they pay some of their rate, because I know the last conversation with Jeremy was telling them they need to pay to show their faith that they would try to look at this thing. So I, I think it would be, you know, if we know that that's happening and they know that you all have more questions, they know the seriousness of it, you should even come to the rest of all.
Alvin Miller, I think we may be tapping them paying the 843 and then come to us because I already have a mortgage due.
Well, I think it is that 116, they're going to have another bill of this, so if they, I would just think that they made a solid effort, paid some of this 2000 dollars and maybe something we can consider, but right now, they're, they're not far ready to have another bill, not like they already got.
So can you break that into an amendment then to this resolution? Does one just-
I would.
Have agreed to table it until the next-
I make a motion, we agree to table this till the next meeting on 16, due to the fact they'll have an additional bill due on 15, see if they deal a substantial payment prior to the 15, and we'll read you sort of that.
And quantify a substantial payment.
We don't want them to be paying you anything, though.
No, but if they're paying, I think that's at least they're paying.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the table to amend Council Bill 75 to work with B and B Theaters and to work out payment arrangements, to post, or to table the discussion and the action on this resolution until the meeting on 116, if they agree to pay 50% of their,
minimum of 50% of their current balance owed, which is 2244.20.
Do I understand your motion?
Yes, that's 1200, 2000 dollars each change.
Okay. So I have a motion to amend Council Bill 75, do I have a second? I have a motion for Alvin Miller, Miller, the second from Alvin Reese, and may I roll it?
Alvin Zaring?
Aye.
Alvin Reese?
Aye.
Alvin Turner? Alvin Davidson?
Aye.
Alvin Doraup?
Aye.
Alvin Miller?
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson?
Aye.
Alvin Miller?
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill-
When you're talking to them, I know they talk like they had something an idea when they would start getting movies again, could you have those, give us some specifics on that as well?
No, we're going to listen to them. We were bothered with the question.
No, absolutely.
Thank you. Council Bill 75, that's resolution R041, Council Bill 76. Council Bill 76, resolution of the Board of Alderman of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, establishing a temporary moratorium on any and all mini warehouses facilities in the City of Harrisonville, Missouri.
Mini warehouses are a permitted use in the C2 zoning district, which you know is predominant retail zoning district along 291, Royal Avenue. And up until now, I think it's worked fine with mini warehouses being in that district. Most of the mini warehouses are not in the entryways of the city, they're not first tier, they're usually built behind something, behind a first, first tier of retail development. But we've recently had several inquiries for mini warehouses, people wanting to build them on E sites in the city. The Heritage Tractor Site where Senator Hurst was going to go, the Bizarra Site along East, East Outer Road at the south end of town. These are sites that ultimately when we, as we get built out and hopefully some redevelopment of Bizarra's and our site, these are the key sites where you generally have your traditional retail development, they would be the most income producing to support good services in the city. And I'm concerned about, about this, this issue, about the possibility of mini warehouses going into these locations. So what we're recommending is to adopt a temporary 120-day moratorium, so let us take a look at it and come back with proposals for amendments to the zoning ordinance. It could be, and I don't want to prejudge, but some of the alternatives are perhaps mini warehouses would be allowed in the industrial zone, or maybe they'd be around in a commercial district, but with certain conditions, certain stipulations, the first being that they would be a special use permit. So we'd like to take that 120 days and take a look at that and in the meantime, we would like to ask you to put a temporary moratorium in effect for that period of time. We, if you take a look at the ordinance, you'll see that we are recommending that it not pertain to a couple of projects that have been in process. You may recall that we adopted, that we rezoned and adopted a primary plant, a primary for Brian Rainer for the second tier, around the Eames, behind the buildings, the line of Pannet Street. We've also had a, a pre-op conference with Dr. Martin Parks, who's wanting to put mini warehouses behind the buildings, Eames also comes in, second tier of property. We don't think it's fair to change the rules on anybody that's in the process, so we're, the ordinance is set up to exempt them, it would only pertain to new acquisitions of the company. They would have to wait for the 120 days and then the, hey, new rules you might adopt. I guess that's all my comments, if you have any other questions.
So, we don't have, you may have said this and I was trying to read at the same time, if I don't do well, I'm trying to do two things at the same time, but, so we don't technically have anything in writing at the moment?
Correct.
That gives us a more defined-
We don't have any new rules written to go through the planning commission and the Board of Alderman.
And then what we have in place as far as ordinances now does not necessarily limit any specific areas?
Correct, correct. Well, within the C2, which almost all are commercial quarters, is a C2.
What, I'm curious what other cities, what, what do other cities use one, do they consider them a C2 type district or have they separated those out? Because it's kind of odd that they would be considered part of the commercial property like you've got restaurants and Walmarts and things of that nature.
Most, I think a lot of cities have, we, we're always completely zoned C2, up and down 291 and commercial street. I think a lot of cities have, would have several different zoning districts and along quarters of that length and they would, and they would not allow something like mini storage on your front first tier lots in your commercial quarters, you know, they might have two or three different zoning districts. And we've kind of taken a broad brush approach and I think it's worked okay up to this point, but based upon some of the inquiries, and I didn't want to procrastinate, and I think we can take a look at it now, so that's why I proposed the moratorium. I don't know of any cities right here around us in Cass County that are going through this, but I know nationally there are, and I don't know why it is, maybe, I don't know why it is, but mini storage is a big, is a, is a big thing now in a lot of communities and I know that there's other communities nationwide that are adopting moratoriums to take a look at one of their areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Pearl? Do you entertain a motion? I have a motion for Alvin Zaring for the second from Alvin Miller.
Alvin Miller?
Aye.
Alvin Miller?
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson?
Aye.
Alvin Reese?
Aye.
Alvin Davidson?
Aye.
Alvin Doraup?
Aye.
Alvin Zaring?
Aye.
Alvin Turner?
Thank you, Council Bill 76 becomes resolution R042. Mr. Pearl, you still have a question?
We have an annotation from Sack Brothers, the annexed in the city, this is a voluntary annexation, they own approximately 30 acres east, west of I-48, 49, south here in 75th Street, they're asking, being annexed into the city, they're wanting to come in, take advantage of the South Harrisonville Sewer Line, yeah, Brick Plank, Brick Plank Road that we are working on. If you want to take a look at page 48 in your, in your packet, that shows, that's a map that shows their property and also you can see in red where it can take us to our present city limits. David Ferguson, the general manager with Sack Brothers is here and Mary, we want to make a couple of comments, but we recommend approval, we would very much look forward to having them as a, as a part of our city and the next step would be if you approve it, that they would, we would need to rezonate, everybody comes in and hangs on it, we all know that's commercial now, but the very next step is to rezonate, rezonate when they come in and a lot of take a look, is it C1, C2, whatever's appropriate, lots of data, talk with them about it and then come to the planning commission and view the property as a property.
At this point, I'll open the public hearing, if there's anyone that would like to speak, step up to the podium please and give your name and address for the question. Steve Miller, I'll close the public hearing, I invite Mr. Ferguson to step up before you, if you'd like.
Good evening, madam. Alvin, Alvin, well, thank you for the opportunity, for us to go into the city of Harrisonville and put forward the district that we're, we're, Sack Brothers has been around since 1971, this is our 18th location, that's our most southernous location, we're mainly on the I-80 corridor, we're going from Cheyenne, Wyoming to Clear Creek, Pennsylvania. We finally opened our doors roughly about four years ago, doing a lot of open construction issues and that, but it's, it's been a wonderful four years, employed, sure they have Harrisonville as a right. I would say, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Alvin Miller?
I was, I was asked, which is to clarify, with the annexation, you're not planning on any kind of additional growth on any of your property that might butt up to agricultural property around you and that you know of?
That I do have doing.
Alvin Dickerson?
You do know that there'll be a $50,000 charge to hook up to the new sewer line when it comes available to you.
We were aware of what it would be, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, sir.
Council Bill 77. Council Bill 77, Ed Wardens of Board of Alderman of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, providing for the extension of the city limits by annexing approximately 30.35 acres of adjacent territory owned by Sack Brothers and located south of 275th Street and west of US Interstate 49 into the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I have a motion for this ordinance?
I made a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, just a second, we'll go to the side.
Oh, I'm sorry, suspend the rule until second reading.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion for Alderman Zaring for the second, Alderman Dorah, to suspend the rule on Council Bill, Council Bill 77, and annex it to a second reading. Roll call please.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Dora.
Aye.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading. Council Bill 77, and ordinance of Board of Alderman of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, providing for the extension of the city limits by annexing approximately 30.35 acres of adjacent territory owned by Satt Brothers. And located south of 275th Street and west of US Interstate 49 into the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorah.
Aye.
Alderman Dora.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you. Council Bill 77, with his ordinance 3520. Council Bill 78.
Council Bill 78, and ordinance of the Harrisonville Board of Alderman approving the sale of property by the Highway 71, 291 partners in progress transportation development district.
Mr. Clark, is it, are you willing to do it?
That's my all I can look up to. I think it was, it was a word of a thumb that would have supposed to be here tonight. And maybe this request. This is on that. The 71, 291 has a person that's interested in buying that piece of property. There you see in the packet from Megan Miller. And pointed out in that, that piece of property that was, that they're interested in. So as this ordinance comes out, this would be a bid for that property instead of just selling to a private individual. This would be a process for that piece of property that's, has, has been done in the past with a, for a fair market value. So it wasn't, it was supposed to be a board member here that's going to be here representing the city on the attorney to be here because they didn't want to incur a cost. But the other board member forgot to be here. So that's what it's pertaining to. They reached out to me a couple of weeks ago, thoughts on them is interested in purchasing the property and wanting to know if they use regulations and rules on me to sell that. They had contacted Mr. Bauer and Megan had a convers- conversation with him. And they thought it would be best to bid the property that was for sale. And I guess it's been a piece that they've been trying to get rid of for a long time.
Which he says, but there's no pictures, so I don't remember.
They kept explaining it to me as the triangular piece that's hanging out there on the side.
Is that number off of Royal Street?
Of course.
Is it over on Opera Royal Street?
Yes.
Okay. And it's the piece right on 291.
Did they tell you any more about it yet?
Yeah, that's the area that, that the city has to move on a periodic basis. And then they did, the TDB is built for that. It's just a very small.
So the ordinance, so the ordinance is the city granting the TDB to write this down.
Right.
So I would entertain a motion on this ordinance?
Absolutely.
I make a motion. So that's perfect, then. Oh, Stan, I'm sorry. I make a motion to suspend the repleting, take it to a second reading.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a motion for Alderman Miller for the second from Alderman Dickerson. To suspend the rule on Council Bill 78 and annex it to a second reading. Roll call please.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dora.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
And Alderman Miller is absent.
Council Bill 78, and ordinance of the Harrisonville Board of Alderman approving the sale of property by the Highway 71, 291 partners in progress transportation development district.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorah.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Absent. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 78, Council ordinance 3521. Alderman, the mayor reports, Alderman Dickerson.
Well, I've been looking for the day round, I won't have one quite moving here.
Good chat.
But everybody in the world, I may not be able to do it, but everything is working okay. I just don't have Wi-Fi on. So I guess I just sit up, sit up and sit and all, figure it out. That's all.
Alderman Davidson.
I have no.
Alderman Miller.
I have nothing.
Alderman Reese.
Well, at the risk of always saying something about Dog Park. I have to say that I visited a couple of times last week and brought some guests from out of town to see the place. And we got nothing but compliments and oohs and ahs about the design, the beauty of the park itself. And it was amazing to me how many people were there. And it was cold that night. And they were out there with, there were six little dogs and four meat dogs. And the big dogs and the little dogs were meeting in the bed and enjoying one another. And I just want to say, probably it's been a great success and I thank everybody involved.
Thank you. Alderman Dorah.
We will be hosting our next town hall meeting. That's Mayor Holden, Alderman Reese and myself. Before I add that, I'll say the list here will be a list figure along with a couple of stat numbers. So encourage you to come out, 9:00 a.m. now at the 9:00 left district on the campus.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just say?
Absent, please.
This is, this is a really special meeting, you guys. Your constituents, I probably did our board votes now. People are always calling and saying, what's going on? Who's doing this? Who's doing that? And they're, they're, you know, rumors and all sorts of things. We need to encourage everybody to come to this meeting. People are going to be there answering questions. Nothing's off the table. Ask what you like. I mean, these guys are the answers and the truth about what's going on. So I just encourage lots and lots of people to be there.
Thank you, and thank you for your support of the Dog Park and all the hard work that you've put in all the run things.
I was just saying, Andrew, bro. Pay for.
Alderman Dorah, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Zaring.
All right, Madam Mayor, I did all of the board here, staff and everybody in attendance. We'll start off by apologizing that I am going to be a long way to here, have a lot to talk about. But I think it's important that you, you heard, that you put out. So again, I apologize upfront. It's, I mean, I made a few notes so that I can move through it as quickly as I can. Again, I think it's something that needs to be addressed and something that needs to be heard by everybody, the citizens, this board, everybody. And all stems, I'll start from last week's meeting, or the last meeting, not last week, two weeks ago, the last board meeting. And how all of that went down and transpired based off of Council Bill 71 we were voting on, we voted 71. I have to admit, when I left here that night, I felt a little beat and undermined in that meeting, specifically on that vote. You know, Alderman Turner pushed it very quickly to a set reading, suspended, pushed it to a set reading. And we voted that in. At that point, I thought, what, what I thought was the Alderman had done their due diligence and had went into the issues of this bill to vote. What ended up happening was we had three people who voted no on that. That's not the fact that they voted no, it's the fact that they gave nothing. No comment, there were no explanations, conversations, there were no questions. And most importantly, they didn't offer any type of constructive solutions to this. Just a simple note to that. So what I'm going over tonight is basically what I was prepared to discuss that night, but I didn't think it was necessary because I thought everybody had understood that. And there's a lot of things since then, because I really left here trying to turn my head around what just happened. A lot of things since then that's come to my attention that is just disturbing to me as a board of Alderman that is here to serve people and citizens and parish. So I think it's very important that I get to say some of that stuff. But again, I left here all the time, scratching my head, wondering, okay, what just happened there? What I concluded with pretty quickly was that there was either lack of confidence. Alderman didn't do their due diligence to dig into each of the issues, to figure out why there should be an issue there. They just didn't take the time to do it. So they didn't have an argument, they didn't have alternate solutions, alternative solutions. Or there were really agendas in there. They weren't really voting in the best interest of the citizens in that case. Either way, to me, it's unacceptable behavior. It's an unacceptable way to present yourself to the city, to staff, to everybody that you serve out here. So the discussion that we would have had, and as everybody on this board knows, when this was brought to us, I think we all raised our eyebrow a little bit at how much money, I mean, it was a pretty lordly amount of money that was involved here. So we all kind of raised our eyebrows on that, that, you know, this may be something a little bigger than us. But that was my initial thought. But then I did my due diligence after that. I did what the citizens required me to do. I dug into that, the issues that were presented in that, in that bill. And I had to break it down. Break it down so it makes sense to me, again, so I could come back with a constructive, meaningful response in either forward or against it, to hopefully help that along because there were some issues in there that needed to be handled. So again, the only thing I could come away from that meeting with was that we voted no, or those who voted no did so just because they believed it needed to go to the voters, okay? Didn't address the issues and how to handle those issues if they did come up again. So my conclusion, what I came down to and what I concluded on was that this bill was really broken down. There were four projects in this bill that really drove the price of that sky high. I mean, it was a considerable amount of money, as we all know. And so I had to ask the question, okay, does this need to go to the voters? Those four projects is the UV treatment, the city lake dam, spillway rehab, the retention basin and the south and main plant improvements that we were voting on. Those were the four main issues. So I had to break them down because again, I'll do my due diligence. If it's something that I can pull out or I can suggest to the board and say, hey, this doesn't need to go to the voters, that I could intelligently pass that along to the board and hopefully get that taken care of. But what I found is I dug into them and we'll start, I can just break them down to you real quick, kind of my thought process of going through this. Starting with the UV treatment. To me, the UV treatment was what I call a no-brainer. I think we've used that quite a bit in the past, that it's a no-brainer. Let me explain that a little bit. A no-brainer, it could be a complex issue, it could be a simple issue. But at the end of the day, the answer is pretty simple and pretty obvious to us on that. So to me, that was a no-brainer because we got E and R down there that shut off our water supply system, okay? So to me, we got to do it. I don't think we need to, you know, take that to the voters and have them vote on this. But let's just say that we did, okay? Take it to the voters, they voted yes, we complete the project as, as it goes. If I were voters sitting out there and I'm voting on this, I would be scratching my head, wondering, what am I Alderman doing? That they're wasting time coming to me to go and vote for something that needs to be done, okay? Bottom line is, had they voted no on it, it's still going to end up right back here in a lapse because are we going to vote no to turn the water off? And I tell you, we had three people who did, they voted no to turn the water off. City Lake, going to the City Lake Dam spillway rehab. This here is a safety issue and I can tell everybody right now, I'm up front and honest, if it comes to safety or comes to the lives of people, citizens, I take that pretty seriously and I will always err on the side of lying. So when you talk about this project, we have experts telling us that they don't know if our spillways, our dams will hold, withstand another hard rain like we've had in the past. But these are experts that's, we depend on it. We're not experts in everything up here. I depend on the experts out there to come to me and tell me these types of things so that I can make a good, honest decision for the citizens of this city. And I can do it knowing that incompetence, I can trust what they're telling me is true. So again, this is another no-brainer to me that, again, if we sent that to the voters, I would have to sit out there as a voter scratching my head, asking, what are my Alderman doing? Why do we have them there going to waste time coming out, voting on it for something that we know needs to be done? And again, I mean, that could be, that could be my daughters, that could be my wife, that could be my family, friends that's driving through that area and that gives way. And guess what? Life can be lost in that. There's going to be, there would be a lot of devastation coming from that dam breaking out there to the citizen. That would impact our entire city. And it's, and it's, we've known it for a while, we kicked that cannon down the road way too long. So I think the citizens would have expected that we can sit here and make those decisions on that. The retention basin, again, all, it's a little bit more complex, but you really don't have to feel too much back on it to see that it's a no-brainer as well, especially for me. I was put in this position back in February. Since I've been in position, I will tell you, I've probably spent eight percent of my time talking to people about the flood issues in this city. And oh, by the way, they're not Board One people that are contacting me about it. They're coming from other boards. And, and I scratched my head up until two weeks ago, wondering, why are they all Board One Alderman? You know, why are they not presenting this through their own? And I think I got my answer last week, why, why that's happening. They're desperate to hear somebody, or somebody to hear them and to address their issues is what it is. So on that one, that was a simple no. I don't have to go to the voters because guess what? The voters have been coming to me and they've, they've been coming steadily to me. And I'm sure it's not just me, but I say that because I'm in Board One. We don't have a lot of flooding issues in Board One. A lot of issues in Board Four and other areas out there. So again, retention basin, basin was a no, no-brainer. I can think through that pretty easily. Then you can add on to that, again, it's going to, you know, fixing that basin out there is going to ease a lot of the issues in the city. It's going to impact a lot of areas in the city, especially the trade fair area, if I understand right, which is where, I mean, that's that's a major flooding, had a lot of lost revenues, a lot of businesses had a lot of loss in that area, and there's a possibility of that to happen again. And my understanding, again, listening to the experts who took their time, put together presentations, and come here and present that to me, I took that, and I can make that decision. Like I said, the citizens are coming to me, you got me looking under a rock if you don't know, we don't have water storms, water issues in this city. I sat with the city engineer, he is, he showed me a list of projects that he's had for ten years, that he's asked for funding on, that he's never done. And I just sit here and scratch my head, how can that even be? I mean, we know we've got these issues, so, again, we were presented with something that answered a lot of those questions, that would help that, an excellent plan to put together, take, take advantage of, you know, the raids on loans and those types of things, the COPs, all of that. And I'm going to start getting after some of these issues, that, again, I've dealt with eight percent of the time since I've been in this position here. So it's, so it's easy to me. Now, when you talk about the south, the main station replacement repair, again, it's a little more complex, there's not a flood issue out there, but if you just peel it back a little bit, and do the due diligence to dig in and understand what's to be gained out of that, what's that, what that's going to do for the city, again, I have to fall back on, that's why the citizens are putting here, to be able to dig into this information for them, discerning and making good decisions based off of the information that the experts give me, and to do this. Again, I would think they would be looking at me like I'm stupid, if I'm coming to them saying, hey, you can vote on this thing, I mean, it's, I don't know. But like I said, you know, no small water issues, anything like that, but there are few issues, safety issues, that are going to be addressed and fixed, and that portion of the bill out there that needs to be done. It's also going to put the infrastructure we need in the south part of our city, that Saff Brothers coming in here, they want to annex it, they want to tap in, they wanted this for a long time. We've missed out on the revenues from Saff Brothers, because we have failed to push that and make that happen. We, we tend to benefit from that. I mean, we're going to get revenues now, because they're going to be a part of the city that we've been missing, and oh, by the way, most of that revenue is going to come from transient people, it's not people of this city, it's people that are coming, going through our city. So again, I had to get my head around that, to understand that that's a, that is a big part of it. Bringing Saff Brothers into the city, being able to annex that, to whatever revenues we can pull off of that, I think I overheard some people talking about the revenues, and how much revenues are going to come off of that, I don't think you know the full aspect of that, as far as taxes and things like that, or maybe property taxes, and, you know, water taxes and things. But that's something that's, that's vital to our city's improvement, that we're going to benefit from twenty years from now. And it's good, Board of the Ball Hall will eventually pay for itself. Not only that, there's other businesses out there that are probably going to be wanting to tap into that, they're going to want the sewer, they're going to want the water. And it also opens up for other businesses that aren't even established yet, are going to want to come be a part of the city, and they're going to be further revenue down the line in, for the long run, on down twenty years from now, you know? So I felt like that needed to be said. Again, my grievance isn't that people voted no, it's really the way they went about doing that. Again, I felt like they undermined the citizens who deserve an explanation, who knows? Maybe they had something to offer that maybe would have changed, maybe there was information we didn't, that we missed, you know? Maybe those citizens that weren't concerned with the issue supposedly, needed their voice to be heard. So, again, it's not that you vote no, but I, again, I believe in, when we talk about transparency, to have that discussion, and I think you should know from me sitting here talking to you now, you're going to know well before time to vote where I'm standing on something, because we're going to have a discussion, because part of why we're here as Aldermen is to do that, do our due diligence, to dig into the issues, to understand the issues, and to be able to make those decisions on behalf of the citizens as well. So that's where we're at on that. Madam Mayor, I tell you, the last two weeks has been an eye opener for me. A lot of things have come to my attention, I guess, as I dig more into this. You know, not just the questionable antics at the last board meeting, but other information since then, and some of those include business owners being contacted and given misinformation. We've had letters and other types of correspondence that's been sent out to the citizens, put out to the public with half truths, really, I believe, intended to deceive, not to bring the full truth of what I just talked about here. There has been, brought to my attention that there's been disrespecting statements made by members of the administration to employees of this city by a board member on this board. And I find that unacceptable. So Madam Mayor, I am making a motion right now that you form a committee to investigate possible codes and ethics violations made by Aldermen Dickerson.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Dorkoff, that I appoint a committee to investigate some possible code and ethics violations committed by Alderman Dickerson. Roll call please. Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Drock.
Aye.
Alderman Miller, passive. Alderman Turner.
I understand that you're called.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Appointed order for the attorney, the gentleman who was attended by remove cannot abstain, correct? Alderman Turner, you'll need to vote one way or the other. Yes, he did say aye. All right, thank you, that motion passes. According to City Code, I will appoint that committee at the next regular meeting of the board.
Madam Mayor, I could just, there's a few more, just a few more things. I appreciate it, thanks, I know I've been kind of long here. Again, I apologize for everybody here for taking so much time. You know, I normally make an appointment to thank the staff, the city workers, all of that, at the when it's affordable and time to give our reports. I just want you guys to know that I don't do that because I feel like it's the right thing to do, or the nice thing to do. It is heartfelt, it's sincere, it's not that out of necessity. And what I would ask, because I know we have a lot of the supervisors here, a lot of the heads, department heads and all of that, we don't have all of the workers that are here, but I would ask that you guys please go back, thank them for what they do, let them know that you have a board that cares about what they had to say, when they take a lot of time and effort to explain situations, just to help us be smart and be able to make good decisions, they are a very important part of us being able to do what we're supposed to be doing as Aldermen here. So please, thank you guys, make sure they know they're appreciated out there as well. Madam Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Mr. Rattler, same issue.
The Moonsmith Airport, all hangars were full, we had thirteen people on the waiting ones, we're not building any more hangars, but just letting you know. The FAA completed their inspection of the automated weather observing station, and everything was good, except a present weather ID, and Bogart has an order in, and will be back in place of that. And then, through the, the last snow, again, it's hard to think about on a snow day, on a sudden, it regaled Saturday, but how we ended up having fifteen layups driven and treated, and we had three hundred dollars in labor costs for that commitment, some of the treatment areas, that mostly is, that's a disruption. The design of the sanitary sewer south service area project, and the ultra-violet disinfection project, we already had a kickoff meeting, we've already had meetings with the President McDonald, and moving forward on those projects. We have, I want to give kudos to Carl, one of the things that the Mid Valley Regional Council, when you are competing on federal dollars, because they have a federal number requirement for those federal dollars, and if they, if you don't like the way they score your project, you can go back and fight with them on scoring your numbers higher. And usually, on average, cities only get anywhere from nine or ten points on average more, and Carl fought it up with them, and got eighteen points more on our score for the COVID over money trip territory project. So I want to give kudos to Carl for fighting with Mark on getting us more points, the higher the points, the better it gets, opportunity for us to get federal dollars for that project. Andy will tell you that the squirrels are very active, and this is the type of year to be well active, and so there's a lot of squirrel guards growing up, and his dog Mini has been on the loose trying to help out. And then we had the, the drug takeback event, which was a success, five hundred and fifteen pounds of prescription drugs that were turned in. We also want to thank VIBs, who assisted with that drug takeback program as well. And then the two-point construction, we're waiting on the proper lights for the PD shower and changing room, and they have noticed they have finally come in, so hopefully we will be telling you all, we can get you in and be able to review, or be able to view that new area of the police department. The new fire truck has arrived, so we're glad to add that, the old truck is not, no one wants to buy it, so we're having to get creative, and so anyone that wants to buy a fire truck, come talk to us. And then, we had a lot of different things with the parks going on, Grant's kind of been bringing out the fire hose since he's been here, with all the projects that we have going on, and with everything you all did tonight, there'll be a very fast movement to get the outdoor pool, and get it ready to go, and as well as start working on it. I just find it astonishing that that unit for the HVAC systems, it'll take thirty weeks to build it, and be able to get it in, and that's, that's huge. But you'll be seeing a lot of changes at the community center, Grant's got a lot of things on that, with the equipment, and with the weight equipment, with that small projects that we push forward, even some of the things here in the community center, you'll be seeing a lot of changes with that, so we'll be making sure that we get that information out to the public as well. And then the Fix It, Harrisonville Fix It app is getting very active, and we're, we are appreciative of staff with that, because we like the interaction with our residents on the complaints that they have, or the needs that they have, and having that communication with them. The new email transition, it seems to finally be done, that's not what made Jeremy sick tonight, but it was pretty intensive for him. We're also moving forward with some of the, earlier this year, the paid performance plans and the policies, and the HR policies, and they're moving those over into PTO policies, we're beginning to move that forward, that you all approved earlier this year for this next calendar year. So we'll be doing a lot of training with the staff this month and next month, going into that. And Dennis, are you listening on this one? Aldi's turning their, their plans and their building plans in, and we have reviewed those plans, and that review has been completed, so we're even closer to a permit on Aldi's. And so hopefully, we'll see them moving forward on that quickly. And one of the things that is really impactful is with the building permits that you all approved, you're going to see significant impact to those businesses, like Aldi's has already commented on how, how competitive the building permits that you all passed, and getting that done, especially on the electric side, and the good things that Andy had on that. We're still, 401 East Washington is still on our, our list to, and we staffed our disconnected utilities, and demo is planned for the end of the year, on that property to be taken down, 401 East Washington. And then, the staff is working with the property title transfer with Walmart Distribution Center, and that ownership will be transferred over to Walmart Corporation for those chapter one hundred bonds. That's a big impact, and one of the things that Roger and I had been talking about is, you know, twenty years ago, the mayor and the Alderman led to be able to offer that to that distribution center, and because of those hard decisions that they made, and I always mentioned it to Alderman Zaring, it was his father-in-law, that was the mayor at the time, and they were taking some heat on, for over eight hundred of that is going to our schools. And so that's a, that's a wonderful impact, and a tough decision that they had to do twenty years ago, when it wasn't popular, but it's paying dividends today, and Roger's trying to track down each of the people that were involved with that, so we can just send them a note and say thank you for your leadership twenty years ago, and be that done for our community and for our schools today, but that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rattler. Questions from the committee?
Oh, I was just curious, so you have some real estate announcements? We have both got time.
Real estate announcements?
Yeah, because in November, we have two new businesses to announce.
Look, we just got to November, so I don't have any.
We can't talk about Aldi's forever.
I know. They're coming. They'll give us the green light sooner or later.
I have a couple of things. I wanted to share a letter that I received, and the letter says, my name is Glenn Tapparello, CEO and General Manager of Southwest Louisiana Electric Leadership Corporation, founded by the acronym of SLIMCO. To give you a little information, SLIMCO serves approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand customers in this other part of Louisiana. SLIMCO operates around twelve thousand miles of distribution, as well as a hundred and fifty miles of transmission through five parishes. Approximately a hundred and five thousand members were without power during Hurricane Delta. Many of our facilities were badly damaged by trees during the event. Without the help of your extremely qualified workers, I did not know exactly what SLIMCO would have done. No doubt, your help saved the day for our organization. Our entire base, our, I'm sorry, our entire employee base organization would wish to sincerely thank all who helped in the effort. Please be sure that if you... Please be assured that if you ever need the help of Slimco, it will be there at your service. The effort put forth by your organization is greatly appreciated. Hopefully, one day, we can meet under less stressful times. God bless us all, sincerely, Glenn E. Temparello, Chief Executive Officer and General Manager." Mr. Pollard, kudos to you and to your staff, because this is dragging on you. And so I echo what Alderman Zering said just a few minutes ago, we want to thank you. Please take that message back to your staff, and this letter is for you. Thank you very much for what you do. Appreciate it. The other thing I wanted to use? Oh, certainly, go right ahead.
I would like to thank you, Brad, or for all, for the opportunity to serve the citizens of this community, as well as other places in losing power. I just, I wanna give kudos to y'all for having the electric system. And I'm grateful to be here, grateful to be serving the citizens of Harrisonville, for our staff at the Department, the best I've ever worked with. And I just, I think this is awesome. So thank you.
And can we just point out that that was strictly volunteer on their part?
Yes.
They were not requested to come, they volunteered to go.
Thank you.
And the other thing I wanna do is, I'd rather weigh for, again, on our students in Harrisonville. Not just the athletes and the students, it's been a really, really strange year for them. And when I look at, at what students and their parents and coaches and teachers have been through this past year during this pandemic, and yet they continue to teach, they continue to study, they continue to learn, they continue to participate in after-proper activities and excel in those. You know, we had a football team, and a volleyball team, and a soccer team, and a cross-country team, and a tennis team, and a baseball team, that excelled in their sports this year in spite of the pandemic. And so I just wanna take a moment and just acknowledge the students, and the athletes, and the teachers, and the coaches, and the parents, and the administrators, and all the support staff in our school district, for an outstanding job. There's been, my hat is off to them, and I know to this board feels the same way. So I just wanted to take a moment and publicly let them know what we think of them, and how proud we are to have them here in Harrisonville. I don't know if you followed, but the girls volleyball team, just this past week, won the district championship. It was the first time that they, the district hasn't won in 16 years. And that's accomplishment for our kids. And even though our football Wildcats didn't go as hard as we wanted them to go, they played well. And there are a lot of young leaders on that team. So when you see a teacher, when you see an administrator, when you see a kid, give them a high five and let them know that we're proud of them. All right, that's all I have. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Have a motion for Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Zering, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned, we'll be here in five minutes for a work session.